.............................................................................................
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
And at this time, we need an approval of the agenda, but we have a couple of updates.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first request is to add a community spotlight, be mayor's youth council, to the agenda. And the second request is to add, under closed session, city of Cadillac, the hearing township, in regards to trial or settlement strategy?
Yes.
Okay.
Someone would like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as present as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for the first public comment. We do ask that you state your name, and then if you would please write your name and address for the clerk, she greatly appreciates that. And if you could please keep your statement. Katrina.
Hi, I'm Bo McCurdy, 417 Crestview, or Donald McCurdy, whichever. And I'm here in support later tonight. I have to go, but a band booster meeting, getting ready for the big band review on a couple of Mondays from now. Anyways, the software they're looking to upgrade is by their current vendor, but from what I've heard, it'll be a real improvement. Everybody can use it at the same time. You can, let's say at night you can't sleep, and something's really bothering you, you can get on it at home, and that can be helpful. But it's all part of a program to get the neighbors, the city, helping the police, because they can't do it all. They need information, and they can easily input that, get that on, and do their jobs, because it's a hard job, without help. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll...
Don Koschmeyer, Cadillac, Michigan. Here to talk tonight briefly about House Bill 4209 that's just gotten passage by the state senate, voted on it, and it was kicked back to the house. It's on Governor Snyder's desk right now regarding medical marijuana provisioning centers, and the other bills of non-smokeable forms of the medicine, edibles and oils and such as. Hopefully, the governor signs it tomorrow, or soon, and then we can begin working with local municipalities, and city councils, and planning commissions, and townships and such. It may be a zone for these places, as it's definitely needed as a safe access point, a safe transport point for people in their medicine. Thank you.
And then we will need a motion to approve the consent agenda, and this evening, we just had the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on September 6th.
Motion to approve a consent agenda?
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, then this evening, we have a couple of community spotlight.
Yes.
Would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the first, or members of the city council. The first community spotlight this evening is regarding the Marina Association. I believe Mr. McKeon is here to present to the city council. And then we do have a public hearing this evening as well regarding the ordinance that was introduced that would impact the Marina Association. This was introduced at the last meeting at their request, and so I'm sure you'll touch upon that as well. So, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, general public, glad to be here. Thanks for inviting me. It's been 11 years since I've had a chance to stand here in front of you, and everything's changed but me. Well, I guess I changed too. We've been the North Boulevard Marina Association since 2006. The year preceding 2005 was spent forming it, getting a marina permit, getting insurance, preparing the rules and regulations, preparing permit agreements, and developing a system by which docs could be claimed at the designated time. We also applied for and received a 501(c)(4) to be a nonprofit organization, which we still are and still have. We have a five-member board of directors, myself, Virginia Mackey, Art Kornacki, Mike Wallenstein, Dave Cosgrove, and we meet officially once per season, but unofficially, every time we go up and down the street and see each other, we're talking about the marina and how things are going, and watching it. So our first year of operation, and we operate as an agent of the city of Carla. We have a letter designated such, and so we operate the marina that way. The first year of operation, we have 40 spaces, we leased out 33 of them. The rest went unclaimed. The next six years, we had three to four spaces, unclaimed. And then there was a change in road end access, and that change in road end access, from that point on, we're full. We are, every space has been claimed for the last three years. I have one space left this year, and within three days, they know to call the city, and they let them know, give us our, give them the phone number, and they call us. In 2008, we requested a change from claiming at midnight on April 1st to the first Saturday in April at noon. We did that for safety reasons. We had people in the middle of the week out there at midnight. It was just a little bit scary. Be snowstorms, blinding rain, and here they are out at midnight in the middle of the week, and it really wasn't fair to the working guy. So changing it to the first Saturday in April made a lot of sense, and that change was requested by us, and you guys, and it was approved here. And we've been that way since 2008. We've been trouble-free for 10 years, with one exception, weather. We used to put out stakes. The original way to claim a space was we would put out a stake at each space, and attached to that stake, rolled up in plastic, would be the directions and the permit application. And then person would claim that, and they had three days to let us know who had it, and then they had five days to get back to us, and either pay for it, or turn it back in, and we'd repost it. Well, then a season came along where we couldn't get the stakes in the ground. We had snow piles left, so what did we do? We used red utility markers, just little red flags. Those we could get in the ground, or get in the snow, we numbered those. And we said, "All right," went up and down the street, said, "Pick up your flag, and then bring it," the place they bring it is my garage. And that worked really well. So we did it the following year, because we had frozen ground again. Numbered the flags, and we're out there, and even though it's not at midnight anymore, we have people out there at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, either parked and waiting in their car, or in a tent, or around a little campfire, waiting to claim their space. It's hilarious. But one of us, with a, we have a green vest that we wear, one of us is always out there, going up and down the street, seeing who's there, who's not, watching what's going on. And we've done that religiously for the entire time we've existed, and it's worked very well. Because by about daylight, we've got three of us in vests, and we're walking up and down. And we streamlined the thing now to where we don't post the instructions out there anymore. We have a list, I go out there, who's here, who's here, who's here, who's here. We pre-do the paperwork. When we blow the horn at noon, they pick up their flag with their stake, come into us, we've got their paperwork already made out, they look at it, read it, sign the agreement, give us their cash or check, and away they go. So what used to take us an hour and a half, two hours, we're done in 35, 40 minutes for the claiming. So that works really well, and we have a lot of control of it, and they really, people liked having their paperwork pre-done for them. So that's changed. Other than that, we have the same board of directors we started with, with the exception of one person, and the person that took Dave Freggs' place is Dave Cosgrove. Now we're requesting a change to 10 o'clock in the morning on the second Saturday in April. I haven't seen a dock in, in front on North Boulevard at the Marina Association, any time before the third or fourth week of April for eight years now. People just don't do it. They claim it, they have no intention of putting a dock in until it warms up and the ice is gone. A lot of people that claim docks are snowbirds also, so they're gone, and in order to claim their dock, especially this year, this coming year, they'll all have to come home early, as do we who run it. So it made a lot of sense, as we talked to people going up and down, to look at doing it on the second Saturday in April, and get it done at 10 a.m. They keep waiting, and they say, "Why can't we do it? Everybody's claimed a space." So the rule says noon, and if I blow the horn before noon, somebody's gonna complain, and you guys are gonna hear about it, and you've never heard that, because we don't blow the horn until noon. We'd like to blow the horn at 10 o'clock in the morning. And if there's a space left, we leave the flag in, somebody knows to call the city, and they call us, and we take care of them. That's about it. If there's any que, oh, the other thing I do, and I forgot, because when you walked in, I usually drop off a list of who's on each space, and I drop it off in the office over there. I don't think I did it this year, but we didn't have any reason to call you, so. But I've been doing that for several years now. I drop a list of who's on each dock space off. Any questions?
What's the earliest you've had somebody out there sit on their spot, so they can claim it at noon?
11 o'clock Friday night.
All night?
Yep.
Usually the same people?
Yes. We change five to six people every year. The rest have all been there. They might have to be on a different spot, because somebody else jumped on their spot. We had a little difficulty with that this year, and we managed to straighten it out before any problems arose. But yeah, it's pretty much the same people.
And what does it cost to lease a space or something?
$200. We started out at three, but that's back when originally our costs were high. Our costs aren't high anymore, and so it's $200.
So the association takes the money?
Yes.
And then what's the money used for?
The money pays for the insurance. We give our board of directors a small fee for what they've, what they've had to do all year. Department of Labor gets a check. Occasionally, we write a check to an attorney, or to Schippers, our accountants. Other than that, it's going in a fund. We're allowed to have up to 50, up to and under $50,000 in the fund. After that, it's in violation of our 401, or our 501(c)(4).
And what do you have now in your fund?
$20,000. And that's over the last 10 years, so there's $20,000 in there. And that, we have insurance, but if something happens, and we have to retain an attorney, we think we're covered. And that's basically what it's for. If we have to retain an attorney, or defend ourselves against something that happens out there, we can afford to do that. And it's not, if it's not covered by insurance.
$200 should be fairly reasonable.
That's very reasonable.
Right.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Did you say how many docks there are?
Forty.
Forty, good. Well, nice. That's great. Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Very admirable.
Dan came in, well, we're not over comedy at the beginning of the summer, I think, because he's in my ward, and he enlightened me, educated me, the program, and what they do. And, you know, I was, I was taken aback when I really learned the breadth of it, I guess, that how much work there is involved with it, and where they've come over the years, if anybody remembers years ago, what it was like here, and it turned into a big lawsuit. I think the city and the neighborhood found a way to resolve a problem that existed that we, you know, we found ourselves in the middle of. So I really appreciate the work that he does, and the rest of the board members as well. I thought it would be a good idea to have him come here and enlighten the rest of us, because it had been so long since we, because they run it so well, we don't hear anything from them.
Right, right. Yeah. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor and members of the city council, our next community spotlight this evening is the introduction of the mayor's youth council mayor in Carla.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Deetland.
Did you turn the mic? Can you see how the mic is all stuck? There you go. Thanks.
Um, I am recently now the new mayor of the youth council. Um, uh...
Previously, Caitlin was the mayor pro temp, and the former mayor went off to college, as we hope all our mayors do, or off to some other great adventure, and we hope they come back. But she was the natural choice to become the new youth mayor. And do you want to tell about some of the stuff that we're working on right now?
Sure. Um, this, not this week, but next week, we're going to be doing Project Sticker Shock, which we've done in the past, which is where we get stickers, and we go to different stores and put these stickers saying the consequences of serving alcohol to minors. And so we're going to be doing that since homecoming is next week. And so people just realize, who are like buying alcohol for minors, the consequences of it, so they like maybe think, "Hey, maybe I shouldn't be buying this alcohol for them." That's, I guess, our most recent one we're going to be doing. I don't know.
We have other things that we've been discussing about, finding projects where the youth can participate in the Cadillac Commons, and what kinds of things that we'd like to do there to get their thumbprint into the future on the commons. Also, in the spring, to have a garden that the youth council, and we're hoping city councils collaborate, and maintain a garden space in Cadillac Commons. And I think we talked about making it a fairy garden.
Yeah.
So we're pretty all excited about that. We meet?
Oh, we meet every third Wednesday of the month, which is going to be this Wednesday, from 4:00 to 5:00 here.
And we have room for other members, so if you are someone who is high school-aged, and you live within the city of Cadillac, please come to the, the city offices here to pick up an application. They're also online.
I think there's some at the high school, too.
There's some at the high school as well, so if you go to Cadillac High School, please get an application. And if you have ideas, or things that you care about your community, and you want to make a difference as a young person in your community, and leave a lasting mark as a young person, the youth council is definitely a way to do that.
Yeah.
Outstanding young people are on the council. I'm so proud of them all, and our new mayor especially.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming to represent the group tonight.
Thank you for sharing the information, Dan. Nice job.
Thank you. Okay, this evening, we have a public hearing.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, Mayor, and members of the city council. The public hearing this evening is regarding the ordinance change, as was actually previously discussed during the community spotlight on the, from the North Boulevard Marina Association. The general change to the code would be to adjust the time and date on which docks are reserved. Currently, it is the first Saturday in April at noon, and the requested change is to adjust it to the second Saturday in April, starting at 10 a.m. And you do have a copy of that change in the draft ordinance in your packet. And that concludes my statements.
All right. Well, this time, I'll open the public hearing, so if anybody would like to comment, you are welcome to come forward and do that at this time.
One thing I forgot, if you say yes to this agreement, we have a call list ready to go. I've got four of our members. Everybody has 10 people to call, and they will be notified this year of the date change, so that all the people that currently have docks will know what the date is.
They're so organized.
Martin, tell us what this, when we get that information out, for people that have done this previously, that are looking to get a doctor's, or someplace we've looked at on our website. Do we publish it anywhere else?
We do. We also send out a news release, and then the paper would be published, and...
Okay. Seeing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and then if we have any more discussion, we can do that.
Yeah, I think it's a good recommendation, if it makes it work for the committee, and it doesn't seem to adversely affect anything. I don't know why we wouldn't approve the...
Well, it makes sense, if they're not putting the docks in till the end of the month anyway. You know, a lot of work, a lot more than we can, you know, I think, on those, but it's a good idea. At 10 a.m., get it done earlier.
I think it gives them that extra week of travel and preparation after the end of March. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-11, amending section 26-2014 of the Cadillac City Code regarding docking. Support.
Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
And that takes us to a lot of communications that we have this evening.
A lot of banners.
Yeah. It's a banner night.
Sorry. Well, there's gonna be a banner month.
Okay, go ahead.
First request is for the display of a banner from October 3rd to October 10th, 2016, for National Forests Week.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from October 3rd to October 10th, 2016, for National Forests Week. Support.
See the roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Second request is for the display of a banner from October 10th to October 17th, 2016, and November 21st to November 28th, 2016, for the United Way of Westford, Mesaka County.
I'll make that motion to display banner from October 10th to October 17th, 2016, and November 21st to the 28th, 2016, for United Way of Westford, Mesaka County.
Support. Councilmember...
Andy Wood, excuse me.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Also being requested to display a banner from October 17th to October 24th, 2016, for National Friends of the Library Week.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the request to display a banner from November 28th. Support.
Wait.
You go to the top one?
Yes. From the 17th to October...
Let me redo that. I will make a motion to approve the display of a banner from October 17th to October 24th, for National Friends of the Library Week. Support.
There we go.
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Also, a request to display a banner from November 28th to December 5th, 2016, for the Holiday Home Tour.
I'll make that motion to approve the display of a banner from November 28th to December 5th, for the Holiday Home Tour.
Support.
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on November 25th, 2016, for the annual Christmas in the park tree lighting.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on November 25th, 2016, for the annual Christmas in the park tree lighting. Support.
I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. The reason why Lake Street is closed for the tree lighting is because there's activities that are taking place between the park and the pavilion, is that correct? Or why do they need the street closed?
It's where they normally set up their stakes.
Oh. And what, is any of this gonna change once the plaza is completed?
Yes.
For these events?
Yes, I was gonna mention it, actually, after you were done approving it. This perhaps might be the last season that we do it in this fashion, primarily for two reasons. One, the plaza will be up and running full steam by a year from now, and this would be a wonderful event to have Senator on that specific area. And two, the second reason, probably equally as important, is that the tree that's used annually, and has been for many years, as our Christmas tree, is unfortunately in very rough shape. It's currently leaning over somewhat significantly towards Lake Street. Half of it does not appear to have the amount of foliage that you'd expect it to have, and it just isn't going to make it much longer. And looking at another solution for that tree is something we're gonna have to do. Perhaps having a tree donated, you know, a 20, 25-foot tall tree that could be put on a stand of some sort in the plaza, and use that for the lighting purposes would be something we'd like to try to explore for next year. But for this year, it's the status quo.
Okay, anything else? Just, thank you. Did we get the motion yet?
Yeah.
No?
Oh, good. Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
The last request for this evening is the approval of the parade route for the Cadillac High School homecoming parade, to be held on September 30th, 2016, at 5:00 p.m., with parade set up on Lake Street at 4:00 p.m.
So we have a couple representatives here this evening. Do you want to come up and say anything?
We're after the same request from last year.
Everything's identical?
Yeah. Many years.
Okay.
We know we can't close down...
We know we can't close down past the library, and we'll come up toward, I believe it's Harris, will be the parade staging area, kind of through the little jog and set it up that way, and while the city maintenance knows to close it at 4:00 o'clock, floats are arriving after that, and students.
Okay.
We're hoping for nice weather.
Always.
Lots of folks downtown.
Yes. A little earlier this year, so the likelihood of nice weather is better.
Yeah, it's on that week, four and five, where you have, this year we're four home and five away, so next year it'll be a year a week later, because of the flip in that year, week five, four, depending on what it's at. We'll get the request a little earlier next year.
You're good.
I'll make them. No, you go right ahead.
All right, I'll make them, I want to get it right this time. I want to make a motion to approve the parade route for the Cadillac High School Homecoming Parade, to be held on September 30th, 2016, at 5:00 p.m., with parade set up on Lake Street at 4:00 p.m. Support.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. There are a couple items under the City Manager's report this evening. The first item has to deal with an emergency purchase that the city needed to make. Under section 2-308 of the City Code, there's a provision that dictates how we're able to make emergency purchases. In this case, about two weeks ago, when we had about a 72-hour heat wave hit us, the air conditioning unit at the DEQ Building here in town, a facility that's owned and operated by the City of Cadillac, went down, fatally went down. We tried to resuscitate it, but to no avail, and we had to replace the unit. Our tenant, which is the DEQ, obviously wanted the unit replaced absolutely as soon as possible, and essentially for safety reasons, we had to. It was unbearable within the facility. We were able to solicit a couple of quotations for the replacement of the unit. We ended up going with the lowest quote, which was from Advanced Mechanical out of Leroy, Michigan, in an amount of $16,261.49. The other quotation that we had received was from DNW Mechanical out of Traverse City, Michigan, in an amount of $16,565. We felt comfortable, especially given that the quotations were so very close to one another, that we had a good number to use, and we did move forward and acquired the new unit. Took us about a week before we could get it installed, but it is installed and up and running now, and it is part of the daily operations of that facility, so it was important that it get installed and get up and running as quick as we can. Because this was acquired through our emergency purchasing section of our code, there is no action for the City Council to take this evening. I simply need to report it in the fashion that I'm doing so tonight, and make sure that it's reported as a part of our minutes.
Thank you.
So you used executive privilege?
I did. Otherwise, the DEQ might be coming out.
Now, when you're the landlord.
Right. Want to keep the DEQ happy.
Yes.
Okay. Kidding aside, the next item, Report Management Software, or RMS for short, upgrade. This is the item that we had a member of the public address the City Council about during public comments. The City of Cadillac Police Department has been working on trying to upgrade our report management software for over five years, probably closer to 10. During that time, we've been working with a company called Core Technology and their product, which is called Tims. The Tims project is a report management software, piece of software. So their package is a very comprehensive one, but according to our police department, doesn't go overboard with respect to all of the bells and whistles that it provides. It provides the functionality that will essentially maintain that the Cadillac Police Department is able to continue along the initiatives that they're trying to reach and the goals that they're trying to reach, while not necessarily providing, you know, a full suite of upgrades of things that we're never going to use. So as I'm pulling this from our write-up that's in the packet, this software package will allow the Cadillac Police Department to maintain the core functionality of the current software. We're also offering additional features not available. Most important is the ability to create usable data that is critical in assessing the police department's responses within our new community policing initiatives. One program in the community policing initiative, the Cadillac Community Partnership, obviously will be relying on timely and sound data to make decisions about problem areas and their impact on partner agencies. Unlike our current software, this new package will allow remote access to this Tims product directly from patrol cars. The Cadillac Police Department was awarded $20,000 through a grant to purchase new computers for patrol cars. The computers, along with this new software package, will provide the city police department with the functionality that it's looking for. This is a situation where we are asking the City Council to work directly with Core Technology, who's the purveyor of this Tims package by brand name, which does require that we ask the City Council to first consider waiving bids. There's a long list of features that are not available in the other package that you'll see within the packet in front of you. This Tims package does meet the National Institute of Justice recommendations for five major indices, Master Name Index, Master Vehicle Index, Master Property Index, Master Location Index, and Master Organization Index. As mentioned before, this has been something we've been planning for quite some time. There are funds available within our CIP to purchase this software at $30,000, and we are looking at doing this via a subscription basis, not an outright purchase. The subscription basis service is at $7,400 a year, and looking at a breakdown of those costs, the one-time total cost would be $9,275. The total first-year cost, including the subscription, is $16,675. Our fiscal year 2017 information technology budget does have the funds. It's already been approved internally through our Finance Director. It would obviously require my approval, which I wouldn't do until after I had our City Council approval, and that's what we're here for tonight, to request.
So, I have a question.
Yep.
All right. We've been planning for that for like five years in the capital improvement budget, and now you're talking about moving it out of there and pulling it out of the operating information technology budget?
So, any capitalized cost that we have that's greater than $7,500, even if it's identified as an IT project, would be still found in our capital improvement budget, in our capital improvement. It's the same funding.
All right. And it doesn't really go into the benefits of leasing rather than outright purchasing it?
There are, in talking with our Finance Director from last week, there were a couple of things he had mentioned to me, because I had asked the same question while we were away at our conference, as to why we don't just buy it outright, what's the difference between buying it versus leasing it? My understanding is that by leasing it, one, we obviously don't need to make the major capital outlay all at once; two, the cost to the city, including the lease, will include all of the maintenance costs, whereas the buying it outright cost does not. And so it would actually be more expensive over time by buying it outright versus leasing it, because by leasing it, the warranty, the warranty and all the technical assistance is part of that lease, versus when you buy it, it's not. And so it would be a more expensive proposition to the city if we bought it versus leasing.
So do we own it at the end of the five years, or is there a fair market buyout on it?
At the end of the five years, we don't own it. However, we are eligible to continue to get, as long as we continue to pay, to continue getting the upgrades to the software. It's all software-based. So, you know, the key is making sure that we can continue to get it supported. That was part of my concern as well, is do I own it and then have to go out and buy it all over again? And my understanding is that that is not the case. At the end of any year that we decide that we're no longer going to pay for, we're stuck with whatever version of the software that we have. If we want to continue to pay, we can continue to pay the subscription fee, and then as they release new versions of it, we'll then get that upgrade down the road as well. So, the initial cost for year one, which equals just around $17,000 and such, because of all the initial training that's happening and all the initial installation that's going to have to happen, and once it's up and running, that cost is not going to be that high.
So is the training going to take place here, or does somebody have to travel for the training?
Don't know.
It says it's web-based training. Okay, I didn't see that.
Yes. I can point out Sarah Lee from Core Technology was kind enough to drive up to answer any questions if we have them. Perfect.
How much in the contract, what, how much can that $7,400 go up annually?
Would you like to come forward, Sarah, so everyone at home can hear you also?
As far as increases, it's going to remain the same for the first two years, and then after two years, so going on that third year, there is a three, between 3% and 5% increase. That's just our standard company cost of living type increase on any software, but we made an agreement for the first two years, we were just going to remain static with that same cost.
It's the first bullet in the contract.
Do we have the contract? I'm just seeing the one sheet.
It should be in your packet.
It's also, the subscription model would be, it's web-based, so we don't have the servers here.
Correct. Correct. You don't need to purchase hardware, and you don't, and so that's another cost savings, is you're not purchasing, you know, a 5,000-plus server, and you don't have to have IT, you know, if it's a contractor, I believe, you know, you don't have to pay for other IT to apply updates that come out. We do all of that, so.
There's no server support, if we would have to require another space in our server rack for another piece of hardware. It's all virtual.
That could go out like air conditioning units.
Right. And they do?
Right, they do. So these cloud things are remarkable.
Are you having trouble finding that?
No, I found it. I was looking for, you know, a really long contract. I saw this. We keep it simple. I even see where it answered my question the first bullet. Must have been a good question.
Well, thank you for coming up to support the discussion. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, I don't know if you're the best person or who is, but.
Of course she is.
Probably, because she sells it, but I've also got a police officer here and the city manager, and I don't want to, and I know it's been explained, the newspaper even had an article about it, but I still don't understand in a nutshell what this does and why it's so good.
Well, basically, it's the means for a police officer who's taking a report, you know, from a citizen, or a crash, or, you know, a murder, any kind of reports that they do. It's a system where you're recording all of that information, and then you've created a police report, which in some cases may go to the prosecutor, if it's something that's going to be going to court, but it's a way for a department to keep that information electronically, and then be able to search information. So they come and deal with an individual and then are sent out on a call. They can look up these records electronically, and now in a patrol vehicle, and say, oh, you know, we've been here several times for, you know, and they have weapons, or, you know, things like that. So it becomes kind of an officer safety, too, but the main point is for the department to be able to generate statistics easily and not have paper, that their, you know, every report is on paper, and then, you know, time-consuming. So it's, you know, unless you're a very small department, pretty much every police department does some form of electronic, you know, reporting.
This one has a crime mapping feature as well, which helps you, without having to do that manually, help you do crime mapping of where incidents are occurring.
Exactly.
The other thing that I noticed when I read that, too, is the auto-fill feature, where, you know, for police reports, they're very lengthy, they're time-consuming, there's multiple forms that you have to do. And honestly, a police officer spends a lot of time off the road trying to get documentation, to be right documentation, and we need to have, the state needs to have. One thing about this program, when we looked at it before, it will auto-fill all the information you're putting into all these forms that's been saved you two to three times, what you're spending trying to generate all that paperwork the way it's currently done. So hopefully, I get to get back out on the street quicker.
Right, right. Well, I think the benefit of having the computer in the patrol cars, they can be visibly on the street, and, you know, if it's a minor report, they don't need to come back to the office, and that's a huge move for many departments, is that visibility in the public and not having the officers, you know, in the office as much, so, yeah, definitely. And you mentioned the state reporting. It's totally compliant with the Michigan reporting requirements, and does much of that automated, too, so that's less time that somebody in the office is needing to fill in stats that the state's looking for. It does that for them. So there's a lot of time-saving that can be handled here.
I have a question. I know in some of that that I've read, it talks about being able to access information that other departments are contributing, so we're not just looking at. But are we currently able to do that, or does this upgrade give us the functionality to do that? Well, basically, what I'm thinking, you can not only bring up records on somebody's name just from our department, but any of the other departments that are part of this Tims program, could be Grand Rapids, could be Reed City, we can get into their database and see what kind of deal they have with a person.
So just statewide or nationwide?
This is statewide. There is a nationwide system that we could potentially, we've done many, probably 100 projects with the State of Michigan, in allowing a department to have their data transferred to a national level, too, so there's definite possibility for that. But what you get with this is the statewide.
Very helpful.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have to make a motion to waive competitive bidding first.
So again, that issue, the way I see it, this is an upgrade to a system that we have, and it's giving us features we're looking forward about. Like, preparing apples for oranges, you know, if you want out and bid this out, because this program is different. I will make that, is there any discussion about that? Okay, I'll make a, I'll make the motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the implementation of the Core Technology Tims Report Management Software. Support.
Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolf File?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
I will make the next motion as well to authorize the implementation of the Core Technology Tims Report Management Software, Suite Report, with their proposal. Support.
Sandy, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Minehart?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Does anyone have anything for good order this evening?
I have one item, let's save the date.
All right.
I would like to mention that on Friday, October 14th, at noon at Baker College, there will be a Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce lecture luncheon, and the reason why I'm mentioning this is I'd like to encourage everyone in the City Council to attend if they're available, along with folks in the public, too. This is a great opportunity to learn about the State of Michigan's finances, and specifically Michigan's broken financial model. That's the subject of the lecture luncheon. The Associate Executive Director and Chief Operating Officer of the Michigan Municipal League, Anthony Manguini, is the guest speaker, and for more information and details about this. this opportunity, please contact the Chamber of Commerce and RSVP. You can do that simply by going to the Internet, www.cadillac.org. Thank you.
Marcus, are these ever, like, broadcasted, taped, recorded?
They are traditionally not broadcasted. The member of the media, usually the newspaper, is there. There may be an opportunity for the guest speaker to come a little early or stay a little late, and do an interview with CCTV, or perhaps other news stations. It's sort of in the mix right now, but it's up to the chamber as to whether they will invite other media to their functions, so.
Good question. We record almost all of our presentations now, because it's so easy with digital recording. I won't be able to be there that day either.
Yeah, and this presentation, what we saw at the Municipal League Conference, it's eye-opening, and, you know, the slides that they have available.
And that'll be a part of the presentation. He's also traveling around the state, he'll be in Manistee, I believe, either this Thursday or next Thursday, so he's going all over. Whoever will, will have him, he's willing to go and talk, so.
Is this something that would or would not be appropriate to have at a council meeting in a brief kind of way? You know, instead of a whole lecture thing, but to have a brief presentation, so that because we do televise all of our meetings, so that our community can become aware of this, and us as well, who can't be there? Would that be possible?
It's a great idea, and I'd be happy to mention it, and see if they'd be willing to come back around this neck of the woods, if they're back in this neck of the woods.
Okay.
But one way or another, we'll do everything we can, you know, to get the message out.
Or maybe you can just show a few of their slides, since you're on the board, that's right?
I can do that, too.
Okay.
When we get there, I do have a recommended motion regarding our closed session, so.
Okay. I would just like to mention that we participated in the Michigan Municipal League Convention this past week, and it was both, I think, eye-opening was one, and inspiring was another. And I so appreciate the opportunity to be able to get that kind of education as an elected council member, and to also see the various communities that are, that represent there, and meet other people that are doing the kinds of things we do here, and to also, I don't know if you were going to mention, were you going to mention about the City of Cadillac? Okay, so I won't mention that. And I don't have to say anything about youth council, because Kateman took care of it earlier, so hope we see you there.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that I, too, really enjoyed the time that we had up on the island with the other people, municipal people from the state of Michigan, but it was, we were incredibly honored to sit there during one of the opening sessions, and see Cadillac highlighted on two of the screens that they showed. One was the fact that the City of Cadillac participated in a successful placemaking session with MSU and the other folks that came here, and I can't remember how many total have done that, 15?
Yeah, not too many.
Yeah, it was a really low number, when you think about the whole state of Michigan. And then the second one was that Cadillac was on a slide with 35 other cities who have done successful patronicity crowdfunding projects. And not only was Cadillac up there with those 35 cities, but Cadillac has done two successful crowdfunding campaigns, and so there's a lot of cities in the state of Michigan, and I was really proud that, proud to see our city up there with everything that's going on.
I think it's amazing that we did two crowdfunding campaigns this year for $50,000 each, and the residents and businesses in this community opened up their pocketbooks and gave to it. It's pretty amazing what's going on downtown in the park system, and I couldn't be prouder seeing it all come together. And I believe even though the match window is closed, there's still opportunity to donate to these projects, because we're not fully at 100% yet, so if you were out of town, or if you were like, oh, I wanted to do that, you still can, and still make a mark in the community.
Absolutely.
Good point. We still need money.
Yeah. Okay, well, with that, we do need to go into closed session, and so we have to add something.
Yes, I will read the motion, if that's okay. The motion would be to adjourn the closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the City of Cadillac, the Haring Township, and Richardson, the City of Cadillac, Wexford County Circuit Course Case Number 14-25321-CZ, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's trial or settlement strategy, and to discuss a written confidential legal opinion from the city attorney. As a part of that motion, we'd also like to extend an invitation to Jeff Dillon, our utilities director.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Thank you. Support.
Andy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.